Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Let me call to order the meeting of the Merrimack Planning Board for Tuesday, January 7th, 2020. Let me begin by reminding everyone who will address the board tonight to make sure you sign in on the clipboard that's on the table up here in front of me, and that your microphone is turned on and close enough to you that you speak clearly into it so the folks at home can hear you. Let's see, make sure you clearly identify yourself for the record so that the person taking the minutes can understand who you are. Our next planning board meeting after tonight is currently scheduled for January 21st, 2020, at 7:00 PM in this room. Let me appoint Nelson from an alternate into a voting position in for Lynn tonight. With that, that completes the call to order, and we're up to our Planning and Zoning Administrators' report. Robert or Casey, have you got anything for us?
Nothing tonight, Mr. Chair.
Are there any questions by members of the board for the staff? Excellent, moving on the agenda. We have, we're going to reorder the agenda a little bit, and there's some items that are going to be continued. Item number four, which is the SAU, the school district's capital improvement plan, will be deferred to our next meeting, either the 21st or February 4th, to be determined. And then, the other thing that we're going to do to our agenda is rearrange item five and six so that Hoyle, Tanner, and Associates is heard in the fifth slot and Crosswoods Path in the sixth slot. I think, are there others that are going to be continued that I should? I don't think so.
Nine, ten.
Oh, items nine and 10 are both scheduled to be continued. So if you're here to listen to or understand RCL Realty or the SAD development of the Doggy Daycare, those will be continued to some future date. With that in mind, the next item on our agenda that we will do is a discussion of the capital improvement program for the town of Merrimack. Paul?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year to you, Paul. I know you speak at these meetings all the time, but go ahead with first and last name just for anybody that hasn't met you before.
My name's Paul McHally. I am the Assistant Town Manager and Finance Director for the town of Merrimack. Come before you tonight to discuss the capital improvement plans for the town of Merrimack per Charter Article 8-9 and RSA 674:7. Basically, for the people at home, we're discussing capital expenditures as purchases, construction, or improvements of land building, infrastructure, or equipment having an associated cost of $100,000 or more and an estimated useful life of seven or more years. For the town, we have major and minor projects. We do not bring construction, like vehicles, like dump trucks and things that forward to the planning board. What we do is we bring construction projects forward to the planning board at over $100,000. I know this is really small at home, and I'll break it down for you, but right now, in the, we break it out into our general fund and wastewater funds. Our general fund has 26 items underneath major projects. I believe that that's pretty much been the most items that have come before this board in major projects. A lot of the projects, though, are repetitive projects. They've been here before. The first one is police-fire safety complex. We're looking for that in about '21, '22. And what we're doing there is we're trying to design a new safety complex to include our fire department and police department so they're campussed on one location, sharing services, conference rooms, and things of that sort. We have hired an architect to help us in the design phase, and right now, we just went through our space needs and our design phase, and we're putting together some very rough floor plans, and that should be coming forward to the town council for final determination on floor plans sometime in this fiscal year 2021. Also, we have a south fire station. We're looking to upgrade the existing south fire station within the boundaries of the property that are out there, potentially adding additional bays in that area and upgrading the living quarters. Stormwater drainage. We're anticipating projects in 2021 construction season on Gale Road, Woodland Drive, South Babuza Lake Road, Thornton Road, Waterville Road, Severance Bridge Road, Burt Valley View, and townwide catch basins repairs, which are ongoing. These are projects that we are doing, hopefully, most of them in-house, but if we need to get a contractor in there to help public health and safety and private property impacts are the major conditions here. We've gone around and looking at stormwater as part of our MS4 permit as well. So some of these have bubbled up to the top of the priority list because of the MS4 and other items. Paving, we continue to pave roads. This year, we put $1 million into paving our roads throughout town and repaving roads. In '19, we did Pearson and Peaslee Roads with stabilization and floor in Trovalay. We reclaimed to an eight-to-12-inch depth paved with a three-quarter inch subpaved base for a depth of two inches and the final top coat of one and a half. So we continue to put money in our infrastructure into our roads throughout town. We have a pavement program, PCI, that we go through and rates each road individually, and that's what DPW goes around and looks at that PCI and tries to get roads in the same area to try to get the best price for our paving dollars. Gale Road stormwater drain improvements, this is new on the CIP. And prior to improving the road, Public Works Department is trying, has been trying to camera drainage lines to replace any failing drainage infrastructure. Evidence on the road surface indicated there was an issue with structures, as you'll see there. Basically, we, it appears that there is some kind of blockage in the interior culvert damage and lines protruding through the culvert pipes, so we're looking to do some drainage repair in that area of town. And that's between Jay and Nora Road. The boat ramp has moved from location to location to location to location. We are in the process of looking at potentially bringing back the boat ramp to Griffin Street. We're still in discussions. We looked at wastewater treatment plant. The fishing game has a 50-50 matching grant, and that will be taking place in the future, and we'll be aligning our Merrimack boat ramp with the fishing game grant that they give the match that they're giving. Also, the city of Nashua had put in a boat ramp for some larger boats, I believe, in the Greeley Park area, so that also plays into how we're going to proceed with this boat ramp in this area. So we're looking at a whole slew of, not issues, but a whole slew of things that go along with this boat ramp to try to determine where the best possible place for the town of Merrimack would be. Severance Bridge slope stabilization, this has been on there, but this is kind of new. There's been some erosion because of the river. So Heagan River is eroding into the bank, and we need to stabilize that bank for several reasons. One, a lot of people use that for canoe launch, but the main reason is we do not want to lose the road in the Severance Bridge road area. So we need to do some stabilization of the bank to make sure that the road stays adequate. This would be news to some of the members, sidewalk improvement plan. The council has heard you, town manager's heard you over the years, to look at some sidewalks and sidewalk improvements. Right now, there is $200,000 that's in this current budget and future budgets for the next several years. We're looking at doing small stretches of road that tie into the town center as best as possible and on the DW Highway corridor, going down DW Highway, south from Greeley Street up and on the other side from Bedford Road, south. So that's where we're looking at, trying to get the bang, our bang for our bucks to try to do some sidewalks in that area. There needs some repairs. We have Depot Street boat ramp. That's, that is at the end of Depot Street. Last year was brought to our attention that it was badly damaged due to current river conditions and some storms that occurred. As you can see in this bottom picture, you really can't watch anything off of this boat ramp, and some erosions has occurred down here. So we're looking to shore up that boat ramp and get state wetland permits and try to do construction in the 2021 year to bring that boat ramp back up to its standards so people can use it. Those are projects that were really geared towards the 2021, '21, '22 year. These are additional projects that we'd be looking at for out-years, 2022, '23, '23, '24, '24, '25, and '25, '26. These projects are in the planning phase, and some of these projects are on the bridge replacement plan, so that's why they're on here. And as we look, we have the US-3 Bridge and Babuza Brook. Believe the funding for that is in the '23, '24, and '24, '25 with the state bridge aid. Bridge replacement is the Chamberlain Bridge. That is in conjunction with hopefully the TAP grant, if that TAP grant, you know, we can spend that TAP grant when we can do that. Some drainage improvements in the Woodland Drive area, that is a continuation of a project that we did several years ago, but looking at like deer wood, birch wood, pine tree, hardwood, and timber. And we're going to break that over a several number of years to do that within our financial resources to get those projects done, and that's also part of our MS4. Like I said, a lot of the drainage is due to MS4. Then we're looking at some gravel road pavings, paving DW Highway again from Greeley Street towards the center of town. And then, the next section would be from Chamberlain Bridge out towards Bedford Road. There's a wire road intersection improvement, and that's actually scheduled for an out of year 2027. However, we wanted to put it on here because we thought it was important to know people have heard about the wire road intersection for a long time and just know that there's some federal funding coming in 2027 to help us with that project. We're looking at some sewer line extensions in the McQuestion, the McQuestion area and the Mayflower, in that area of McQuestion, Mayflower, for some extensions of some sewer lines. Library has a bunch of placeholders with HVAC, sprinkler system, sidewalk, slate roof, elevator, and a new library. They are actually in discussions with some architects to give them some proposals to look at a new feasibility of a new library and how much that might be, sorry, a new library and how much that would be, and going forward, and we are actually going out with a RFP to help them in that process. And then, in '24, '25, I can't believe it, but it's already time for a master plan again. Seems like yesterday, we just finished one, so that's coming up in '24, '25, so the planning for that has begun. And then, athletic fields, we have some placeholders in here in '25, '26, but '23, '24, I know some developers have offered some of their common land for athletic field usage, and we're in the process of evaluating if that's a feasible solution for us. Lastly, I would like to talk to you about sewer, some sewer projects that we're looking at. I don't have a slide for them, but sewer line extension, master plan, we talked about that, sorry. Sewer relocation, this is a project that's going to be in conjunction with the turnpike widening. Right now, we bring our sewer across the Effie Everett Turnpike in a culvert, and with this widening of the Effie Everett Turnpike, we might have to move that sewer pipe that comes across, and either they're going to let us continue to use their culvert, and they're going to build a bridge, or we're going to have to move it into our own culvert. So that's in their drawing phase, their planning phase of the project, but just know that that's something that's going on in conjunction when they come through and do that section of road, and that would be near exit 11 by, between the old Merrimack Hotel and Executive Park Drive in that area. So that's where it would be. Also, next year is, in our sewer fund, we have the Phase 4 of our plant upgrade. If you can remember, last year, we were doing a two-phase upgrade. We're doing a Phase 3 and a Phase 4 bondage-wise to get some of the pump stations and things we needed in case of failure, to get the drawings and the plan started for those things. In addition, in the next phase would be upgrades to the facility and other infrastructure needs for that sewer plant that is over 40 years old now, pushing 50, some of the equipment in there is pushing 50 years. I believe I hit all the talking points there. I know I rambled for a while. Any questions?
Let's see. Board members, have at it. Start over here. Alastair, Bill, I know you're probably town council, you reserve it for that venue.
Thank you. Paul, for the past 12 years, I have sat here and listened to the need to spend, it varied from 1.4 million to 4 million, on the south fire station. And over that period of time, the town has done a swap with the school board to get the land on Continental Boulevard. A subcommittee was formed, which Lynn Christensen and I sat on. And even last year, it was said it was essential to have this facility because you wanted to house the ladder truck up at the south fire station. During the 12-year period, I've pointed out to you that this was a gold-plated idea quite unnecessary. I know there's a need for better staff accommodation, including the need for separate bathrooms and provisions for exercise facility. Suddenly, I have been proved right.
Not proved right, they're listening to you finally.
I don't believe that.
You're being persuasive enough.
I don't believe that.
God, head it up with the two-by-four.
But I'm quite sonically astounded that suddenly, this $4 million building that you wanted is no longer wanted. If the town had passed it, you would have a $4 million bond floating around, which would still have to be funded. I just call into question the whole thinking, and now you're going to be talking about a 9 or 10 million bond? I just don't understand. And I think the town, that this planning board deserves better information than this provides. I'm sorry, I'm totally frustrated by this, by this to-ing and fro-ing and the changes that the fire department have put in. I really don't understand.
I'm sorry for the confusion. Maybe I can help you, help alleviate some of that. When we were looking at that, what we were looking at when we got the bond and everything, we were just looking at moving our Station 3, which, Station 2, South Station, which houses three people. And we were moving that over to Continental Boulevard, and we were expanding that building a little bit to include housing some of our apparatus and things of that sort. During that time period, at that time, that was the plan that was going to be put forward in the, you're right, the committee came forward, and we put a bond on the agenda. As, as things have developed and spaces, needs have developed, and looking at the overall growth of the community and where the growth is occurring in this community, we, as a, as a group, the town council and the town manager, felt that it would be better for a safety complex because at the same time, if that did pass, we would have had a south fire station, but we would still need to this, we would be coming back if that would pass. We'd be coming back with a police station in the budget and not this combined safety complex. So what the council has decided is to combine the two, police and fire, build a new central fire station and new police station, and then renovate the south station out at its current location at this time.
Well, I don't change my opinion. This has all happened in 12 months?
Planning, and we've really, we've talked about it for, in the last 14 to 16 months with the council?
No, 12 months ago, the presentation at this table was that you wanted a $4 million south fire station. So I'm sorry, I find it, anyway, if Bob may say I've been listened to, I don't believe it, I just think we're going mad, but anyway.
I offered that up a little cheek for benefit, but when I look at this stuff with the way that the fire stations have developed, and now there's a safety complex, I have a different view of it. I think that ideas are intended to continue to evolve right up until the point that you decide you're ready to go with them. And even when we sat here last year, and frankly, every time we look at anything that's '22, '23, and further on out, it's always sort of a maybe, and we'll see, and that's kind of the plan now, but that plan thinks and changes. And so, I applaud the council for continuing to evolve and refine the plans, think it over, get new opinions, get new information, and in this case, if it ends up making the south fire station a lot cheaper, that's good. Safety complexes do seem to be the way that towns are going, and I promise you, they're not cheap. You know, whether 10, 11 million dollars is the going rate and equivalent for town, you know, I have to trust the experts that have done that research into these things, but I, I don't have any objection to the idea that the ideas evolve over time, and you take a closer look at them in the same way that, you know, sidewalks didn't used to be in here, but now they are, and some of these other things that have changed. As something new comes up, something else changes. So it doesn't mean that I know all of the details about how that was planned, and I'm curious to know, you know, some more, and we can watch some town council meetings and see how that discussion goes, but I don't have any negative view of it because the ideas have evolved a little bit.
The one thing I would suggest is that when, given that we also will hear from the school board that they want a new SAU office, when you move out of the police station, that would be the ideal place for an SAU office, but, oh, well, never mind. I'm very cynical.
And those discussions can happen.
Other members of the board have some comments about Paul's presentation. I have a few thoughts, but Nelson?
Okay, well, Paul, first of all, I was a little bit confused by your presentation. It doesn't, the order you went through things and doesn't match this chart, which...
Yeah, you jumped around a little bit on us, but that's okay.
It jumped around and left me wondering what else was there. I didn't find on this the athletic field, although there was a slide on it somewhere back in the package.
Line 26, 26.
Line 26, he says, there it is, oh, the athletic, yeah, okay. All right. Okay, I understand about that now. Now, that was something that the planning board tried to initiate through the developer, and that's how that got on there. My other questions, comments, if you will, regarding the Merrimack River boat ramp, and you've got it out here in '21, '22, but I don't know, I think your chart said, your detailed chart said something like it was going to be south of the wastewater treatment plant, and that is not, that is a very difficult site to work. Having had the opportunity to tour that site, it's going to be a lot more money than it shows on here because of the height of the bank and the lack of parking at the location, and, as you point out, the fact that they're building a new ramp in Greeley Park, which is, probably may fill some of this need, and certainly, I think our ramp should follow their ramp and see how it works down there before we went and built one, although it shows here in a fairly near timeframe, if I remember. The, let me see, the, yeah, the wire road intersection has gone way west, and maybe that's on purpose, but we sort of thought that that was going to tie in closer with some of the other improvements in the town center because it's certainly a key piece there in the town center.
I think it's, that's a funding, the state funding is pushed out to 2027 in there.
Is that what, is that what drove it?
Some federal funds that we'd be getting.
Yeah. Okay. Maybe we need to do something temporarily to get a pedestrian way through there that would suffice until such time as the whole improvements got made. Something to think about there.
I think when we do the bridge, US Route 3 Bridge, which is basically around that same time.
Yeah, while we're doing the Route 3 Bridge, we could at least get pedestrians through there from the town hall to the post office. That would be my suggestion there. And the, I'm not sure where Gale Road and Nora, Joey Road and Nora intersect, or if they...
They're down in the south?
I know where they are roughly, but I don't know where this, there isn't enough detail in here to show us what, what the problem is and what we're trying to fix here.
Nelson, if you, just give me a second. Dawn's going to come up, and she can explain what the, what the situation is over there and what, why it's occurring.
Okay.
Dawn Twamala, for the record.
Move a little closer, here you go.
When we went to pave Gale Road, not this past year, but in 2018, I did a lot of camera work down in that section because the road is actually caving in in a couple spots. You can see some wheel depressions and whatnot. So we wanted to know what was going on. So we were having a lot of issues on the corner, the south corner of Gale Road, and I want to fix the drainage issues because we found the pipes were in poor condition. We want to fix that before I put the expense of paving over the top, and if I paved over the top, it would just fail instantly. So the cost of doing Gale Road and that drainage far exceeds anything that I have in the budget, normal budget for doing drainage. So in order to get that fixed, I paved up to Nora Road to go from Nora down to the end of Gale, which ends up at Joey. Then, that's, that's the section that we need to do.
Okay, it's a whole section of road then?
It is.
Yeah.
Yes.
And the pipes weren't proper in the first place, I would expect.
They're, they were putting in somewhere in the 70s, I believe, my research.
I believe so, I was there.
And it, they're having issues.
Not surprised.
They're separating, they're caving, they have things going through them and lots of neat things.
Okay, that's all I need right now. And when is that done? Sorry, is that, what's the timeframe on that?
Do we put it on the list?
Next year.
Next year.
2021.
2021, next year?
Yes, yes.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Anything else, Nelson?
I think I understood the rest of it, thank you.
Okay. Any other comments by members of the board? My own comments are more just in terms of the organization of the way that this is presented. Items 16 and 17, which are sewer line extensions, I didn't know why those aren't included down under the wastewater world as a part of that grouping, even though they're funded by the way that they're funded, but it seems like the sewer and the wastewater would be, would belong together. Is there any reason why they were kept separate?
Yes. Way back when we started this, one of the first agreements we had with a business for sewer was stating that any sewer line extensions would have to come out of general fund. And then, once the sewer line extension was completed, it'd be transferred over to wastewater fund. The way the town of Merrimack has funded it and the capital reserve funds for the sewer line extension is in the general fund, and that's why they continue to stay into the general fund at this time.
The other comment I had just organizationally, I'm glad to see that the master plan is listed here and that there's some money proposed in the budget in the future year. I'm just not sure that a master plan is a capital purchase or a capital acquisition, but...
It's not, but we wanted to bring it to everybody. It's the magnitude of the dollars, and we wanted to bring it to people's attention that it's coming up again.
Thank you for that, and thank you to whoever's looking out for that dollar amount. That's a bit more than it cost last time, but everything's more than what it cost last time, it always is. I was happy to see the line 6 sidewalks as well as the line 15 sidewalks, and to hear some of the discussion about how that's being embraced. I know that the planning board has been an advocate for that for a long time, and it's not always been persuasive for everybody that needed to hear it and listen to it, but it definitely seemed, it's clearly built into your capital budget on an ongoing basis as being something that we look at as being a desirable part of infrastructure improvements, especially along DW Highway. So I'm certainly glad to see that. Thank you for that. That's all that I had for comments on what I saw here. Nelson's got another one.
I have one more that you just reminded me of, and that's the, what's called the McQuestion Sewer. That's the sewer line that was put in, that has the sag in it, that was put in part of the school building?
No.
Yes.
There's a sewer line that comes off and goes up McQuestion, more towards Mary Meeting Road.
Marty?
Mary Meeting Road, out that way. And then, there's the sewer line that comes out of the school and up Babuuk. There is some discussions, I believe, that you'll be having in the future with the developer. And some of these sewer in this area might change the way we're going. Right now, we're going up towards Mary Meeting and out and connecting through, in that area, versus coming down and connecting on Babuuk Lake Road. Because that sewer that you were right on Babuuk Lake Road does have sags in it, and we do not own that. The school owns that sewer line.
Okay. So, okay, where is this line, this line, this budgeted amount here puts the line where? From the new development to, or is it connected to the new development?
It's not connected to the new development. These are existing developments out in that area. Kyle, you want to come up and explain?
Good evening. Kyle Fox, Public Works Director. Which one are you talking about specifically, Nelson?
Specifically, I was talking about item number...
Sixteen.
Sixteen.
The McQuestion one.
Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, so the McQuestion Sewer would add sewer to the existing developments on Mary Meeting Road, and the road off of that, which I forget. In our current master plan, because as was mentioned, we don't own the sewer on Babuuk Lake Road from Madeline Bennett to Jessica, because we never accepted it. Our sewer master plan calls for that sewer connecting across McQuestion Road through an easement to Jessica Drive.
Okay, so Jessica Drive is the development that's in there, that's already built?
Yes, yeah, that it would connect to. But that's to connect the Mary Meeting development.
Okay. So, which is, what is that, when you said that? This particular piece of one point seven million is going to build a sewer from where to where?
So, assuming the school sewer doesn't get fixed, it would connect from Jessica Drive through an easement to McQuestion Road, then up Mary Meeting Drive, and get that whole, it's a loop road.
Yeah.
And it would get that whole loop road.
Sort of bypass the other line.
Correct.
Yeah.
If the middle school sewer does get fixed, now it's a much easier connection for us to make, and we would make the connection from Mary Meeting right to Babuuk Lake Road at the intersection with Babuuk and Madeline Bennett.
But what if the sewer doesn't, the school sewer doesn't get fixed?
Well, that was his first scenario.
That's when we would connect...
The school will still have sewer.
Cross-country easement.
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, that's what I was meaning.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Paul, questions? Are you all set?
I'm all set with that, yeah.
Thank you, Kyle. Other comments or questions? Nope. So, thank you for the presentation. It's been our practice in recent years, especially with a full agenda like this, to accept the presentation and then defer making the decisions on the rankings to the end of the night, just so everybody here doesn't have to be bored with that process. And so, without objection, members of the board, I will do that.
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
And we are all done with that item on the agenda. While we were introducing that item, I noticed that we had a couple of regional impact recommendations that we would normally take up in the Planning and Zoning Ministers' Report that we didn't. Robert, do these require our attention tonight, or are these the projects that are being continued?
Sorry, I forgot that was there. Let's see.
One of them is in the agenda.
Yes, they are something you do need to address tonight. And the staff feels that both the parcel A project and the LeFave Demers Lot Line Adjustment Subdivision are not of regional impact.
What's the will of the board with respect to the regional impact recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the advice of the town staff that there is no regional impact, and therefore do that accordingly.
Seconded. Motion and a second. Nelson, you have a discussion?
No, I was going to second, but...
Okay. So, second by Counselor Boyd. If there's no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? We have six members here tonight, so that's six-zero-zero. With that, back to our regular agenda. And this is the part that we were going to rearrange and do item number six next, which is Hoyle Tanner and Associates, Inc. as the applicant, and OVP Management, Inc. as the owner. Review for acceptance and consideration of an amendment to the site plan conditions of approval. The applicant is seeking an amendment to the sidewalk installation condition, item number thirteen, discussed during the September seventeenth, two thousand and nineteen, planning board meeting. The parcel is located at three sixty Daniel Webster Highway in the C-two general commercial, aquifer conservation, elderly housing, and planned residential development overlay districts. It is tax map four D three lot one, Case Planning Board two thousand and nineteen dash twenty-two A. It's postponed from December seventeenth, two thousand and nineteen. And with respect to that item, I will recuse myself and turn the gavel over to our vice chair.
Thank you, sir.
Alister.
Okay. Please, please tell us what you want to tell us.
Sure. Bill Davidson from Hoyle Tanner. We were here about two months ago, received conditional approval. One of the conditions, we did have some discussion on sidewalks. One of the conditions, I think, Robert, if I'm wrong, is it thirteen, was the sidewalk. And we had talked about bringing, actually, hold on, I got some exhibits for you. So, yeah, the only thing that we're here for tonight is, we had some discussions with the sidewalk. And if you look at sheet C-five, we had gone back and forth a little bit about it, and we had come up with that on the north side of the property, we would tie in a sidewalk, bring it into the east portion of our property. On to the east side of our property, in this location here, and then we would be able to bring the people through the retail development back out and across in this location here to the condos. Now, there was discussion, so we were here twice, and Robert had actually given us a clip of the video, so we could go back and see what was said. And I had thought that we had said last time we were at the meeting, and had a discussion about bringing the sidewalk out to the signal. I know Nelson definitely wanted that. And there was, I thought that last time we were here, there was a discussion about that. It wasn't actually last time, it was the previous time when we were here for the redevelopment, and not the apartment complex in the back. So, the issue that we have with bringing the sidewalk all the way out to the signal in this location is that currently, there's no sidewalks along Daniel Webster Highway, and there's no ped phases, there's no pedestrian push boxes or anything like that for, if we were to put a sidewalk there and bring people to this signal, we'd be creating an unsafe condition by bringing somebody to the signal with nowhere to go, nowhere to cross if they wanted to cross the entrance and wanted to, whichever way that they wanted to head, or if they thought that they could cross Daniel Webster Highway. There's no, there's no way, we don't want to bring them to that signal without having something in place that's safe for them. So, what we had done was bring them to the condo association, and we had thought that that was, would meet what we had agreed upon the last time we were here at the planning board. When we had talked with Nelson, Nelson had said one side of the property to the other side of the property, and it didn't really register with me, because our property lines here, we have an easement, this dashed line in this location here is an easement. It's not actually our property. We do have an easement to do drainage and sidewalk improvements and those types of things, which is why we're allowed to do the sidewalk. But if we were to put a sidewalk along the south side, we wouldn't have enough room in that easement, and it would actually be outside the easement onto the condos. Even if there was a ped phase down here, we wouldn't be on our easement. So, I guess what I'm getting at is, I was hoping to get some clarification or relief, or however we want to talk it on, the condition of thirteen, because ethically, we can't bring somebody, it could be anybody, could be a small child, could be elderly, could be anybody that we bring to that location, and they're not, there's nothing there for them. We can't bring them there. If sometime in the future, you know, I understand from listening just to Paul, that there was going to be some grants in the future for sidewalks on DW Highway and elsewhere. If there was something that was improved there, that we could certainly bring them to that. But it would have to have that prior to this small segment of sidewalk that we're talking about. It's not that I don't want to put the sidewalk there, I just, we can't put the sidewalk there before having failsafes for somebody.
Well, I hear what you say. Would you like to comment, Nelson, first?
Okay, well, I hear what he says, but I can't agree. The one thing, you're ending the sidewalk in a place with nothing to connect to anyway. The sidewalk you proposed doesn't connect to anything.
Connects to the condo association, where most of the people that we were seeing come across was from the condo association, so we were...
Purpose was to get people from one end of this development to the other. And as far as I'm concerned, a viable alternate is to build it along Route Three after all. And I think that we can probably discuss how we get them across the entrance, but that connection has got to be made somehow, so that we can have a connection along Route Three from end to end of this development. And that's the only way I would agree to anything. And that's the only reason we agreed to this kind of loopy way of getting through there. But the goal has always been to get people, pedestrians, from one end to the other of the development.
I understand that. So, how would we go about, how would we go about the signalization upgrades that are required there for...
Unfortunately, I think he's left, the signal man is left.
Yep, he has.
Well, that's not the first worry. The first worry is, you're trying to change what was agreed, and I have to share with you that Public Works in particular doesn't like this idea at all. They would like to see a sidewalk all the way along DW Highway, which in the first instance, you didn't particularly want. Now, my view is, if you were to put that sidewalk in, I think we might be able to bully the DPW to provide the push buttons that we're talking about. But to certainly end nowhere or into that condo association, in fact, you've actually missed out, because you're saying you're worried about your legal implication for doing that. And my view is, let's forget what you're doing, what you agreed to do. Let's have a sidewalk all the way along DW Highway. End of story. And I'll bully DPW to put the push buttons in. There's an offer for you.
So, we have two options, it sounds.
Well, actually, I think you didn't want one, so you've withdrawn your option. You've now got the Milnes Disco option, put the sidewalk in all the way along the front of DW Highway.
So, when we talked about that originally, there is a fair amount of issues that go along with that as well.
Well, there may be, but the Department of Public Works seemed to think it was the best way of doing. And I mean, if you look at the things that you've just heard the financial director talk about, the town has put in a grant, TAP, for a TAP grant from the federal government to provide additional sidewalks all along. So, I think you could enter into discussions with the Department of Public Works to understand how it would be done, how it could be worked in view of their TAP application. Period.
Well, the TAP application, I'm not sure exactly what the Merrimack TAP application is, but generally, that's through federal highway.
That is, it's federal highway. It's federal money.
So, tying up a private project like this with federal funds can be complicated. Originally, when we, before we did the apartment complex, we had gotten a waiver for the sidewalks when we were just doing the retail project. Now that we've come back with the apartment complex, there was talk of trying to make sure that we were able to get the apartment complex people down to the retail, which we did. We also solved the problem of the people that were using it from the condo association that were coming across. We gave them a good crossing. And we've also tied into the DW Highway section that's in front of the old, the old credit union, I'm not sure what it is now, on the north side. So, there's been considerable improvements to that. And I understand that it's still not connecting to that signal. But without that component, a pedestrian component there, I can't connect to that signal safely.
Well, Mr. Milnes has just offered to you the possibility that the town might take care of the signal part of this.
I mean, in the letter, in the notes you sent to the town staff, you say you're apprehensive of the liability and insurance concerns of building this piece, because it's, as you rightly say, it's on an easement part of the property and not on your property. My view is, if you build this, if you do what you're doing, you are liable for removing the snow, which the town is always reliable for, in the event of somebody slipping and falling. I don't think, I think your liability is fairly there anyway. So, I still say, let's cut your losses. You've got a huge project, your whole of the, the commercial site is wonderful. Let's put in a sidewalk and make it look nice.
Make it safe for people to walk through here.
I am trying to make it safe, and I'm not trying to be disrespectful in any way.
Nor am I. I mean, I just don't see...
This waiver request, is that what you were referring to, when there was apprehensive and insurance and liability?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Because I don't, those words aren't in this letter.
Well...
And I, it's a difficult thing to talk...
It's the staff member that we got.
Okay, I'm sorry.
And it was sent to Robert Boss, Simon at OVP Management.
And I'm not saying that those are wrong. Those are, but that's not how, that's not how that we wrote this. And, you know, there's always concerns about slipping and falling and things like that. That's...
Yeah, but you'll be liable for making sure the sidewalk is removed to snow. The town won't do it for you, you've got to do it. And the state law says you have to do it. So, I don't see why you don't go for the simple solution, which the town would like, Public Works would love, if you put in the sidewalk along the Daniel Webster Highway, and we will get the town to install the signals.
And I can certainly talk to my client who's...
Well, I think you need to talk to your client, because I don't think you're going to get a resolution otherwise. get a resolution otherwise. We're certainly not gonna turn, agree to this. Your wish, as far as I'm concerned, I mean, obviously, my colleagues have the vote, I'm just gonna say what I think. But I don't see why we should let, change the thing unless you agree to change it to the, what's normal, a sidewalk along the front.
So if we were to, if we were to construct the sidewalk along that, would we be assured that the signalization portion would happen prior to?
I will give my personal guarantee, and if necessary, I'll pay for the damn thing.
Wait a minute, you won't, you, you, be careful what you're just agreeing to. He said, we, he wants to see this done first.
Oh, no.
And I don't think that's what you intend to agree to.
You put the sidewalk in, and I'm sure Public Works and the board, and the direct, the councilors would be able to persuade the signals to be changed.
I like it how the chairman looks over at me. I've been sitting here quietly listening to the whole conversation. What I will say is this, I encourage you to have a conversation, you, Mr. Barsamian, make an appointment with Kyle. Sit, sit down with him, see what can be done to ameliorate that particular location there. Cause back when Mr. Barsamian presented to us at the onset, when you were looking to rehab the entire development, where I think I said thank you nineteen times publicly for what, for what he was willing to do. I think they present a very unique opportunity to provide connectivity as it relates to the folks over at Island Drive and the new project that's being built across the street. So I'm not, I, to be very candid with you, I really don't care if a sidewalk goes on DW Highway or not. I have a very different, different opinion here, but what I do care about is people being able, they're coming south down DW Highway, being able to access that particular parcel. You got Hayward's, you got Tucker's, you got Altitude, you got Thirsty Moose, you've got a new credit union in there, you've got a whole boatload of reasons for people to, to ambulate from wherever they live, to come, to go to that particular location. So I think maybe it would behoove you to, to sit down with Kyle and see what can be done at that particular location. Cause I'll tell you, that location has been on the council's radar now for well over a year. Not just as it relates to your project, but the East Ridge condominiums, DW Drive, Island Drive, the fact that it's one lane in either direction, you've got that, you've got that little connector road that comes off of, that comes off of Island Drive that heads north onto DW Drive. You know, I mean, we had residents from Island Drive come to the council six to, I'm gonna say, six to nine months ago, looking for a stop sign at that particular location. So that particular area has its issues, it has its challenges, and I think it presents a very unique opportunity, I think, for you as, as an engineer to sit down with our DPW guy to see if there's a way to take one piece of the problems that we have at that particular location, see if you can make it a little bit better to not only benefit the project that Mr. Barsamian is building, but also to benefit the people that, that frequent the establishments there, the condo and, and the Island Drive community. That would be my recommendation to you. I think there's an opportunity to solve a problem here, as opposed to, you know, having you construct a sidewalk along Daniel Webster Highway, which I'm not, not enthralled with. I think there, there is a unique prop, there is a unique opportunity for you to work with DPW to figure out how to make that location work. That would be my recommendation, Bob.
Can do that.
So I think to allow that to occur, the board would have to continue this out.
Oh, yes. We'll continue out for a month, to give you a chance to get that done. We're nobody, we're not forcing anything on you, we just, we'd just like to do a better job. Okay? Does any, would somebody like to make a motion to that?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the item brought to us by Hoyle Tanner and Associates regarding condition number 13 of the conditional approval for sidewalks be continued to Tuesday, February 4th.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
If that's the correct date, Bob?
We have a motion as seconded. Would I like to have a, a show of hands? All those in agreement, say aye. Or against, say, five, zero, zero. We look forward to seeing you on the 4th of February.
I'll be here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With which, I will ask the chairman to come back and take over.
Take over this miserable job.
Thank you. You put it much better than I did, sir.
It's the benefits of a classical Jesuit education.
I know that. I realize that. I lack that, sadly.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair, for taking care of that item on our agenda. We are then going to come back to item five from our agenda, which is Crosswoods Path 3 LLC as the applicant, and DW Development LLC as the owner. Continued review for acceptance and consideration of final approval for a site plan to construct 21 multifamily residential in three office units. The parcel is located at 747 Daniel Webster Highway in the I-1 industrial, aquifer conservation and planned residential development overlay districts. Tax map 7E lot 46-54, case planning board 2019-23, and it has been continued from the July 16th, August 20th, September 17th, and October 15th, 2019, planning board meetings. Robert or Casey, is there anything that we need to know before we hear from the applicant?
Uh, no, Mr. Chair.
All right. Please introduce yourself and tell us where we're at with your project.
On the record, my name is Richard Mayan, professional engineer with Mayan and Parkett Engineering Project Engineer.
Richard, can you pull the microphone closer to you? It may be on, but it's-
It is on.
Yeah, bring it a lot closer.
It's gotta be closer, so-
There you go.
-I can pick up.
Again, Richard Mayan, professional engineer with Mayan and Parkett Engineering, engineer for the project.
Excellent, thank you.
Hello, I'm Chris Bova, Crosswoods Path 3, the applicant.
All right. Who would you like to present to the planning board?
We were asked here in, I guess it was November, where the application was accepted. We went through a list of things and discussed it, and we're back here to follow it in general. We're following staff memorandum dated December 11th, to Robert Best from Timothy Thompson. That's overall what we're following. And I'll just take you, snossus through all the items. We talked a lot at the time.
Can you, again, if you still can't hear you?
Is it on? I'm sorry, it wasn't on.
The light-
Yeah, the light's very bright when it's on. It's, there's no question once you got it on. Got it now?
Yeah, it is on now. Can everybody hear me now?
Yeah, I'm sure.
I can yell louder than the microphone, probably. Anyway.
Thank you for doing that. Do as much as you, the introduction of your name so that the folks that are taking the minutes will hear it. And other than that, I think we all caught the gist of the rest of the-
All right, my name is Richard Mayan, professional engineer with Mayan and Parkett Engineering. I'm the project engineer for the project. We were asked back here in, I guess, October, I mean, excuse me, in November, I think it was, anyway, where the application was accepted, and we went through a series of issues, which I will go through now.
Go ahead.
It's generally addressed in staff memo dated December 11th, from Tim Thompson to Jim and Best, outlining where we are on the project and where he suggests we should go.
All right. Please walk us through the issues that needed to be addressed from October until now, and how you've addressed them.
All right. I'll go through them now?
Yes, please. Yes.
The first issue was the, we had a retaining wall along the, the west side of the, the building, well, project in the vicinity of Daniel Webster Highway. The wall was proposed to be as much as eight feet high. Because it's in the setback, you know, cause it's eight feet high, it was classified as a, as a structure requiring a variance. Instead of going for the variance, we've regraded the project and eliminated the drive along that portion of the particular site going from the front to the rear. In that light, there was some concerns about the fire department. We have a fire department letter, which you folks should have, dated 12/20/2019, and they essentially, the fire department essentially said they're satisfied with the plan and the current thing. The next thing-
For the order, Mr. Chairman, that wasn't in my packet.
Yeah, that-
It wasn't in our packet.
It was, the letter came in after the memo was written up, otherwise the comments would be in there, but yes, we do have a copy of that with us tonight. If you'd like to see it, it is in the project file. This is standard fire department letter that says that they're satisfied all their conditions.
Yes.
Happy with that, thank you. Please, continue.
The next issue of consequence is the sidewalks. We have a, did a little bit of a brief discussion about where sidewalks should or should not go. There's consideration for Daniel Webster Highway, there's consideration for our side, the north side of Crosswoods Path Boulevard, and there's a consideration for a cross, crosswalk to the existing sidewalk on the other side of Crosswoods Path Boulevard, or the south side. Attorney Brad Resgate wrote a waiver letter with a lot of legalese, but basically, there's no sidewalk on Daniel Webster Highway anywhere near our project, so making any connection to that particular area of building and sidewalk serves no purpose. It's a sidewalk to nowhere and it serves no, serves no one. The next point to be made is on our side of the, of Crosswoods Path Boulevard, currently there is no sidewalk, and there's no sidewalk for the entire length of our property, including all the way down to the next intersection. The name of the street escapes me, but it's another 500 feet away. So the most viable place is to put a crosswalk from our property to the existing sidewalk on the other side of Crosswoods Path Boulevard, which leads all the way down and into the rest of the PUD, which is a viable walking route for everybody and things. So in this particular plan, it calls for a painted sidewalk. It, it's listed for the moment as by others because it'll, it would be in Crosswoods Path Boulevard, which is private, which is essentially an easement, not a town road. So I'm not sure how you guys wanna, if, if you like our idea of how to do the sidewalks, that when you, if you come to any kind of conditions of approval, it should stipulate that the private sidewalk gets built and put in place prior to a CO for the project, something like that. Because we have a problem here with this private road, which is a little unique. It's really a driveway or an easement. So the next thing to see on this thing is the homeowners association have asked us to supplement the streetlights on Crosswoods Path Boulevard, and we show one at the intersection with Daniel Webster Highway. In the easement, the street easement, we showed one down the road to the, beyond the building, and then we show one across the street. It all says "streetlight" by others. There's a detail in here, but it's not, because again, they're offsite, they're not in jurisdiction, but we've agreed with the homeowners association to put those in. And they're part of the plan. Again, they're offsite private improvements, but not really your jurisdiction, but it's important that everybody understands we're doing this for the neighborhood and for the And then there was a question about what they call, they call pressurized hydrants, mainly to distinguish them from dry hydrants or pond hydrants. Anyway, we've shown a hydrant to, at the, to the left of our entrance road in Little Grant Marine Island there, and that, that'll be our main hydrant for the project. We also have existing hydrants across the street and up at the upper left corner of the project on, on DW Highway. So the project is served by three hydrants. And that's, again, the fire department has looked at that and it's comfortable with that. Also, I'll point out that this is a sprinkled building, and the sprinkled design is part of the building permit process, so, so not only do we have full sprinklers, we have plenty of hydrants on this particular site. The rule of thumb generally is to have a hydrant within 500 feet of a building, generally, because, I don't know if you folks realize, you should not have an engine anywhere near a building that has a fire on it. You need to be a safe distance away. So we have these hydrants within, within 500 feet of the building, so the, the fire engine would, would be able to tap them and, and extend the lines through the building. There was a question about New Hampshire DOT, they have written a letter dated 12/5/19 saying we meet the, the criteria of previous permits, and they've reissued our permit. The, the permit number on my plan is, which was submitted to you guys sometime in November before the snowstorm, it's got the wrong number. I'll have to fix that, but-
Okay.
And we have an email from the EverSource people because of this easement through the back of our property. That email is dated 12/13/19. They've essentially said they're satisfied with how our plan treats their easement. They have a very basic easement, no spelled out rights other, and their rights come from the fire, the electric code of the state of New Hampshire, which essentially says you can't raise the land at any distance to, to decrease the vertical separation, and you can't put any things within the easement, such as trees and things like that, and you can't raise the grade in there and things like that. And they still have to have access to that. So they're satisfied with that, and that's, they put in that particular document.
Do we have a copy of that document?
You should.
Robert?
My understanding is that that's not the final word from EverSource, but it's their indication that once there's approval by us, then there's a formal approval.
Oh. Okay, I just wondered if we had had a copy. You, you don't need to find it, Robert, but just that we had a copy somewhere in our files.
Yes, for sure. For sure. The plans always call this project on 747 DW Highway. The fire department wants that to be number two, Crosswoods Path Boulevard, cause that's where the entrance driveway is, and that's generally how fire departments-
Yep.
...address. So the plan address in the title box will be changed to, to, to Crosswoods Path Boulevard. These comments came in, in the middle of December, so they didn't have a chance to necessarily update the plans, but that's in the, in the thing. I'm trying to think if I have anything else on my little list here. I'm pretty sure if that's of, anything of consequence that we kinda discussed or is part of the, the December 11th memo, which we were gonna discuss during the snowstorm, but we're here now, so. And I don't know, there's another thing we, we're in the, I think we're in a 60-day window? I don't know if it says it anywhere, which technically, if you go beyond tonight, we need to give you a waiver.
I think we need one even to be here tonight.
Yeah, I'll just note, if, if for whatever reason the board opts to continue it, Mr. Bova did provide the board an extension to that, the statutory review clock, so-
Under the IRSAs, you have 30 days to schedule us, and 65 days to make a decision.
Yeah.
All right, and that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah.
We can, that can be waived for cause.
Yeah. And you're agreeable to that.
Yes.
That's all.
I don't wanna go too far, but I think we're, not to be, I think we're ready tonight for a conditional approval, but whatever. It's up to you guys.
And you do see the, the comments about you've gotta put EverSource instead of PSNH and things like that. There's a list of little, little twig, twiggy things that gotta be-
Well, we've, we've done everything that PSNH can, can ask of us.
No, but on the plans, you're gonna have to put EverSource and not PSNH.
Oh, yes, okay. I'm old school. I can't get used to EverSource.
No, I understand that, too.
And because even all the legal documents say PSNH, but anyway, yes, we'll have to fix those things.
Those are just minor fixes on the, on the plans.
Yeah, we have little things, uh-
All right. Thank you for your presentation. Let me ask you a couple of questions that are on my mind. Let me thank you for some of the changes. I like getting rid of the retaining wall, I never really understood what that was about. I think the connection of the sidewalk with a crosswalk across Crosswoods Path Boulevard to connect to the sidewalks in the development itself is consistent with what we wanted when we met last and had some discussion about that. Thank you for that. I, I don't understand the "streetlights by others" note. I understand that they're offsite improvements for you as a result of being part of something else to do within this planned unit development. I don't know what "by others" means.
Oh, meaning it's not part of this project approval-
Yes, it is.
But it's still, my applicant, my own property owner is gonna do those, so.
All right. Since it's an amendment to a planned unit development, it is part of this regulation, and I'm glad that you're gonna do them. I don't see any need for it to specify "by others" if it's simply a matter of some kind of a sense that it ought to be separate, but it's, we're gonna do it anyway.
Mr. Chairman, I don't care either way. Mr. Cummings told me to do it that way.
Excellent.
Who did?
I don't care either way. They're gonna get done. And that's his wording.
By you.
So my, my question to you, Mr. Chairman, is if we continue to do those, will you need some sort of an agreement? Are we gonna need some-
Are we gonna need some sort of a use agreement? Because that's what Timothy was telling me.
You keep some, that's private between you and the homeowners association.
Yeah, whatever you've got going on is not, not a concern.
That's why the "by others" is there, too, so.
We don't, we wouldn't want any, hold you up for any kind of an agreement like that. I think that on sheet four, I think Nelson had suggested to me or before, that there's some inconsistency with the labeling of the various landscape features and types of trees. And let me see if I can point those out. The row of shrubs or something that crosses the PSNH easement on the east side of your plan, that symbol doesn't appear in your chart.
Sure it is. It's the very last one on the bottom left.
That's a different symbol.
It's a different symbol.
Well, it's meant to be the same. I'm sorry, I'll fix that.
Okay, so that's intended to be the same symbol as the one that's used around the buildings for that purpose.
I'm pretty sure, yeah.
Which is, what is that symbol? Even though it's on there, I don't see a.
It's one of those five listed shrubs or whatever they, they call them.
Are they shrubs or are they, are they grow up to be trees?
Well, they're low-growing. They're, they're not tall.
They can't be tall because you can't have anything tall in a PSNH easement, EverSource's.
Things like the high-mush blueberry, they go eight, 10 feet tall at best.
I gotcha. So, all of these things listed on the shrubbery list and planting size at two feet tall are mature height, four to five, four, five feet.
Right, those are.
And so, tho, that symbol will be changed to match one of the shrubbery types that's on your plan.
I'll make my drafts and do a little bit better job.
All right. The symbol for ornamental trees that's on the middle of your table, I don't see that anywhere on your plan for where you're gonna put ornamental trees.
All right. Along the front of the building in the very small circles.
Those look like shrubberies, the symbol in your shrubbery.
No, no, there's some shrubs, but they're also to the right. There's some circles with lines in, in them.
No.
All right, those are the ornamental trees.
Okay, you, use the symbol that's in your table, the one with three legs and a wheel in a circle with three legs inside of it? I don't see that anywhere on the plan.
All right.
The one with five or six legs, that's a little smaller, is your shrubbery plan.
I understand, we'll make it ma, match, but that's what it's intended to be.
Okay. Where are the ornamental trees gonna be?
All around the building.
All of the ones that are the shrubberies are actually gonna be ornamental trees?
Not the shrubberies, the circles with the five or six radiating lines inside of them.
Okay, so, yes, those are the ones that are.
Those are the ornamental trees.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16 ornamental trees surrounding the building?
Yeah.
Well, you missed a few around the parking lot, but yes, that's, there's, that, there's roughly that number.
With a mature height of 20 feet and a spread of 15 feet, as close as they, a place to each other and, as close as their place to the building?
Yep.
May not be the best choice.
There's 10 trees there in most of these spots, some of them only five, but so there'll have to be some selective trimming, but, you know.
Well, there's quite a few of them that are between the sidewalk and your building. The sidewalk is only five feet wide or so, and so that, that planting area is five feet wide, and you've got a tree with a 15-foot spread that you want to put in that location, several of them. Are you sure that those are intended to be ornamental trees and not shrubs?
Well, they're meant to be ornamental, but I'm thinking here, because you've pointed something out to me. If we do the, the last two on the, on the ornamental tree thing, the shadow-brow service berry or the maple, which has a 10-foot spread, that might be.
So, why don't we do this? I don't think that we'll remember or understand if you try to point out which ones are gonna be which. Submit a plan that's clear when we get to signature. We can make it a condition of approval that we get a plan that clearly identifies, and that the symbols match, and that only the symbols that are used are showing in the table and all of that.
Yep.
That work?
That would work.
Thank you, thank you for doing that. There was another question I had in my mind, but it escapes me. Does other members of the board have questions or comments that they'd like to make?
I think.
Um, no, yes?
Yes, I have.
There was something with retention basin.
Yes, I got that. The, what they call the safety bench. This is on.
Oh, yes.
On the drainage system in page three, there is a bench there that leads into the stone riprap area. And the comment from our town engineer was that, that the safety bench at the top of the detention area should be a minimum of 10 feet wide, per New Hampshire Stormwater Manual, Best Practice, Management Practice, Volume Two. It is also recommended that a forbay be added to further the water quality, so.
That's your outside engineer, okay, not your town engineer.
That's our town engineer, by the way.
Well, maybe he repeated, but that's, the outside review said also.
Oh, okay.
That's what he's, he's just repeating that.
Okay, then I had it wrong, probably.
That's all right.
Gee, but it's supposed to be 10 by 60, it doesn't appear to be on the.
Excuse me?
Is the, is the safety bench that you're showing on your plan the right dimensions?
No. No, that's the criticism.
Well, I'm not sure what he's calling a safety bench. The overflow swell, which is 25 feet wide, is shown five feet, 25 feet long and five feet wide. He wants it 10 feet. I think that's what he's talking about there. The rest of it is the 40 feet by 30 feet stone is, is to slow the velocity down in any event there's ever an overflow. This is, this is a somewhat over-designed, large basin, so.
Yeah, we're looking at the entrance to the basin, not the exit.
That's an apron.
The 25 lineal foot overflow, the top.
The overflow to the right, the, which we're calling the entrance, is the apron where most of the drainage goes, at the back of the parking lot, is that?
Yeah.
And that's shown to be 10 by 60, crushed stone, 12 inches deep. That's, that's to, where the majority of the drainage goes, that's to prevent erosion from the edge of the parking lot.
Yep, I get it, I get it.
Now.
I don't, the water's going the other way. The water, water's headed east, right? Yeah.
The water's going from the parking lot.
Yeah.
Into the basin.
Oh, okay, whoops.
See those squiggly arrows? That's supposedly the, that's the drainage direction.
Oh, yeah, those funny arrows, yeah.
All right. Now, the forbay was not a recommendation, was only a suggestion. And in this particular case, there's no place to put a forbay that would be effective. And one, and two, this is an oversized, very large detention, retention basin, not detention, retention, which, which will capture any silt and exfiltrate into the ground. It's, this is not erosion that's going through the basin and over the basin and out. This is designed for a 50-year storm. So, the, the forbay for sedimentation control is, is not effective here and is not needed anywhere in, in any regard. That's when you use detention basins, when the flow in and out, when there's regularly flow in and out. With a retention basin, it's generally a flow in and only flow out with major storms above 50-year, 50-year event, which is near the 100-year in, in magnitude. I can't, I can't go through all the math, but the, the bigger the storm, the less difference there is between the storm per year.
I get what you're saying. I'm gonna leave you with satisfying the condition of approval that says meet with the town engineer asked for.
That's fine.
That's the way I'd leave it.
I'm trying to explain engineering.
That's the easiest. Let's stay with that, I like that.
Satisfy the town engineer.
Best you guys can understand.
Other comments or questions by members of the board? There is a request for a sidewalk waiver, which is an accommodation so that there's not a sidewalk needed along Daniel Webster Highway or the internal Crosswoods Path Boulevard. And the applicant's trade-off for that is offered up to be a sidewalk across the front of the building with a connection to the internal sidewalks of Crosswoods Path, with the logic being if you want to walk through Crosswoods Path, you're gonna have to get on that sidewalk system anyway. There is no sidewalk system on the north side of Crosswoods Path Boulevard.
And the north side leads nowhere.
And so, what is the will of the board with respect to the applicant's request for a waiver, paying particular attention to the statutory criteria which are outlined in the December 11th?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we grant the waiver on the basis that the specific circumstances relative to the subdivision in such, and the condition of the land in that subdivision indicate the waiver will carry out the spirit and intent of the regulations.
Before we look for a second for that, I assume we're talking about a site plan and not a subdivision, correct?
Sorry.
Site plan. With that, is there a second for the motion to grant the waiver? Is there any discussion? If there's none, all in favor of granting the sidewalk waiver as presented by the applicant, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 600 to grant the sidewalk waiver. Is there any member of the public who wishes to weigh in on the applicant's proposal? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Does the board have any last discussion items before it decides whether to, or how it will take up final disposition of the application? If there's none, is the board ready for final action?
Mr. Chairman, may I make a recommendation that we grant conditional final approval to the applicant with the following conditions, as that were outlined in the memo of Mr. Tim Thompson to you on December the 11th, 2019, plus the various things that have been discussed today, which will, corrections to the plans, doing the trees properly, et cetera, et cetera, and all these have to be incorporated before we will sign the plans off.
Seconded.
Excellent motion and a second. One of the items that was mentioned and brought up here tonight, just for clarity for the record, was removing the "by others" reference on the lights.
Well, yeah, all right.
Any other discussion by members of the board? If there is none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? That is 600 to grant conditional final approval.
Thank you, hope.
That's great. Thank you for presenting your project and needing to work through the process. Item number seven on our agenda is Merrimack Parcel A LLC. As the applicant and owner, review for acceptance and consideration of a final approval of a condominium conversion. The parcel is located at 10 Premium Outlets Boulevard in the I-2 Industrial and Aquifer Conservation Districts and Wellhead Protection Area, Tax Map 3C, Lot 191-2, Case Planning Board 2020-1. Do we need to, anything that we know before we hear from the applicant?
Yep.
Tell us where we're at. Please introduce yourself first and tell us.
Good evening, my name is Dave Fenstermacher from VHB. I'm the project engineer working on the Merrimack Park Place project. Can everybody see the, the board okay? I think everyone has copies as well, okay.
Well, I have my own copy, but I can't see that, but that's okay.
Hiding behind the edge of the counter, but we've got a copy.
Okay, I'm here tonight, the Monahan's are here, and LaSessi, who is the applicant, or was the tenant for the apartments, and we've been here a few times. We're here for the conditional use master plan, the subsequent site plan, phase one, and really as the projects progressed with the Monahan's and the tenants, at this point, it was determined that for financing and maintenance purposes, we needed to prepare or break the site into condo units and a recordable plan for that. So, what we've submitted for this is taking the same design, same plan that we've been here, none of the layout, none of the design change for utilities or anything, it's really just breaking up the units. We have unit one, which would be the apartments, unit two would be the future phase two, unit three would be the hotel pad, and unit four, oh, sorry, unit three would be the hotel, yeah, and unit four would be the restaurant. I think that's what we decided for the final number. And the remainder would be the common area. That includes the entrance access and the detention pond, and then the emergency entrance on the top. So, you can see this still respects the existing emergency access up there and kind of basically defines that as something that's gonna remain as, as the common area. We have received technical comments in the staff report. We've addressed the technical pieces, and we've provided an updated plan for Robert to review. And besides that, all the other ones are pretty standard and no issues with any of those, so I think that's the brief overview, and if you guys had any questions, I can answer, or we have the Monahan's or LaSessi that could answer some questions as well.
Thank you for coming in tonight for the brief presentation. Typically, these condominium conversions for the purposes of financing are fairly simple reviews by the planning board since they're simply lines on a map for the purposes of financing, and they don't really reflect that there's gonna be any change from what's previously been approved as a site plan. With that, does any member of the board have questions? Bill?
Yeah, very quickly, Dave, the restaurant, the Dave's, the restaurant is listed as unit three.
Yeah, that was one of the technical comments.
Okay.
That's been already addressed.
Okay, thank you.
What should it be?
Four.
Thank you.
If you get your binoculars out, you can see it on the.
Yeah, sorry, it's four.
The new restaurant's four. On the, on the board.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? The first item of business for the board to take up is whether the application's complete and contains enough information to invoke our jurisdiction.
Go ahead, Alston.
Don't go on.
No, you go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that the, we have, we have sufficient information to accept this application for final approval.
Seconded.
Motion and a second to accept the application as complete, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 600 to accept the application as complete. I don't think that we've identified that any waivers are necessary. Is there any other discussion items for the applicant? Nelson?
Well, just, just questions, sort of. First of all, these all get reviewed by our town council and all the documentation, that'll be one of the conditions, right? And the other thing is that we're kind of locking ourselves in here at this point without, if you make significant changes to the site plan, which is not yet finalized, right?
Well, we have a conditional approval for the phase one, and the only remaining area is that phase two, so that, that lines up with the master plan.
It does li, yeah, it lines up with the master plan, yeah.
Yeah, so the, the apartments and restaurant, hotel are all intended to get constructed shortly, so those are.
Okay, I just didn't want you to paint yourself in a corner here.
No.
Just to echo that, I've actually got final plans, the intended-to-be-signed copy that's gone out for review. I'm awaiting final department comments, so they're very close to getting signatures on those.
Yeah.
Excellent. The one thing that I would follow up on Nelson's comment for is even though this is technically now going to be a subdivision, and these will be separate units, the, the site plan for unit two will be read in conjunction with unit one, four, three and four, that it's all one site. And if you make changes, you decide, hey, I don't want to do a restaurant in unit four, and you want to come back to amend that site plan, it's gonna be reviewed as an entire We should probably have some kind of a condition of approval that indicates that, I think. Other comments or questions with respect to the condominium? Any member of the public wish to weigh in? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. There are no waivers requested. If there's no more discussion by members of the board, it is appropriate for the board to consider what final action it might we wish to take.
Just a comment, if I could, Mr. Chairman?
Please, absolutely.
I, I don't know if we talked about this last time. I know when we had the previous conversation, was there, or, please, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm just a little slow tonight, I apologize. Was there any discussion about putting a crosswalk over to Dunkin' Donuts in the new restaurant? We did have that conversation.
Yeah, we did, we had it fairly frequently. I think the challenges are varied and many, but largely circle around the state's control of the section of the roadway and some of the complications that relate to that.
That's still state highway, Bill.
Where, where does our portion of Continental end?
It actually goes all the way up to Camp Sergeant.
It does.
That's all DOT.
I think your portion starts just where, what's, whatever the street is that goes down by MVD.
Greens Pond Road.
Greens Pond Road, thank you. I think that's because M V, DOT plow and use Greens Pond Road as the point of where they stop plowing and then move, turn around and go back and do it again.
Great.
My memory is that the old relocation of Camp Sergeant Road, which creates that sliver along. along the west side of this parcel, has the broken up little remnants of parcels along both sides of D W, Continental Boulevard there.
Yeah, I was trying to remember how that such a road, I mean, we've been talking about it for a long time.
Yeah. It pretty much lines up with the emergency access road that we have.
If the town buys in what DOT wants, it should take it on, yeah, and I know the answer to that one.
Yeah, we do. Follow up, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
It's more of a comment. Nelson and I had the opportunity to attend a meeting with the Merrimack Village Water District. Across the street from this project is Natticook Lake, and there's actually been some testing that's been done at Natticook Lake regarding an uptick in the level of sodium chloride that's in Natticook Lake as it relates to the level of salt that's being used on that particular, that particular roadway. I would encourage, and I know Mr. Monahan has been more than accommodating to this community over the last couple of years, I would, whoever the management team is for this particular parcel, that they try and use best practices as it relates to how they treat the roads as it relates to.
Salt minimization.
I think they're on a no-salt restriction at all.
No-salt restriction.
I believe that's part of the site plan.
Okay, I didn't even see that either. Okay.
Yeah, the state runs their, does the roadway there.
Of course, state's problem. I just, I would be remiss if I didn't.
Yep. That's an important conversation to have.
And I do apologize for any redundancy, Mr. Chairman.
No, none at all. Any other discussion? I know that it's not part of your condominium plan, but I've forgotten sort of what the provision is or the plan for where you're going to store snow when you plow over here. Are you guys going to truck it off or what was the agreement that we had? This is old site plan stuff, it's got nothing to do with this.
Yeah, we have designated areas on site, but the intent would be to, you know, everyone wants to operate their businesses and the residents need their spaces, so I think their intent is to haul when it's the larger storms.
Okay. And obviously, you'll probably use unit two while it exists as an undeveloped site for some storage.
Yeah.
Okay. I don't have any other questions. We've heard from the public.
One more, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
Do you have a tenant for the restaurant yet?
Jeff? No? Maybe? Close.
So it's not, okay, I was just curious.
Non-public.
I would say, you know, things are far enough along with this as.
Could we ask that it's perhaps a restaurant that serves American food and not Mexican food?
No, we can't ask that. Stop.
Well, every other restaurant in Merrimack is gone Mexican.
The market will bear what the market bears.
Alistair would like a good English restaurant that serves.
No, I didn't specify English. I didn't specify.
He can have whatever kind of restaurant he wants. I'd prefer that we not separate by national origin.
This is not the planning board's business.
Let's not dive down that rabbit hole.
Sorry, I shouldn't, that was flippant. I apologize.
Okay. What's the will of the board with respect to final disposition of this?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend that I make a motion that we grant conditional final approval to the condominium conversion application with the conditions as listed in the letter from Mr. Price to you, together with a, I think, which is what I think you said, but let me, please correct me if I got it wrong, that there are any changes to any of the units requires a total review of the site. Did I get that right?
Yeah, well, changes or site plan review related to any of the units will be done as an entire condominium development.
Thank you, that's what I meant to say. I knew he'd tell me how to do it right.
Is there a second for Alistair's motion?
Seconded, Mr. Chairman.
Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I do want to thank Mr. Monahan and his team for putting this together, and I'm personally excited to see what this process is going to develop into. I think it's a great thing that's, that has happened to the community of Merrimack. And again, just makes our community a destination location, not just with the premium outlets, now with the hotel and the restaurant, just further. It's going to drive more people coming north to our community. It's a wonderful thing, and I want to thank Mr. Monahan for his efforts and the team that he's put together to make this happen, so thank you. I appreciate it.
And I'd like to say on that.
Excellent, excellent point of privilege to offer that compliment to the applicant. I'll echo it as well. Thank you for that. If there's no further discussion, we've got a motion for conditional final approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Six zero zero for conditional final approval. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, now, let's see, let's have an agenda here. Item number eight on our agenda is Jonathan LaFever as the applicant and Nathan DeMers as the owner. Review for acceptance and consideration of a lot line adjustment and two-lot subdivision. The parcels are located at 26 and 30 Thornton Road West in the R1 Residential and Aquifer Conservation District, Tax Map 2C 68 and 2C 68-3. It's Case Planning Board 2020-2. All right.
Thank you very much.
Sounds good.
Oh, now we've got to find her.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Reverend Casey, is there anything that we need to know before we hear from the applicant?
We're good.
Of course, take your time.
He's got the square footage now.
Good.
I think we'll use these a little bit.
It's taken it from the board, isn't it, too?
Okay.
Yeah.
Can you hear me all right?
I can hear you great.
All right, good.
Please introduce yourself and then tell us about your plan.
Sure. My name is John LaFave. I work for Meridian Land Services. I'm here tonight with the owner of the property, Nathan DeMers. We're here tonight to present a lot line adjustment and subdivision plan. The properties are listed in the memorandum. Get back to the first page here, excuse me. 26 and 30 Thornton Road West in the R1 Residential and Act for Conservation District, also known as Tax Map 2C, lots 68 and 68-3. The properties consist of approximately 7.89 acres. We are looking to first adjust the common lot line between the two properties, and then second, create one new lot in the middle. We had submitted plans to the town. We got some comments back in the memorandum that said we were deficient in our contiguous dry area or upland area. Our initial concepts, it was oversight on my part. I've corrected the plans this evening, so you can see that each one of the lots has over 100,000 square feet of contiguous dry. One more thing to add would be July 31st, 2019, a concept plan was before the zoning board of adjustment for this same subdivision concept, and we did receive approval from the zoning board for reduced frontage of 169 feet, plus or minus for each one of the lots where 250 feet is required. The new lot we're creating, if we were to put a driveway in the middle of the lot, it's flood zone, it's wetland, it's not the best location. There is already somewhat of a gravel drive or woods road which goes on to this lot, so we've done is we've prepared or proposed an easement on lot 68-3 to accommodate the new lot's driveway. We've also included an easement so that there would be a 75-foot safe distance buffer for the septic, and no other easements exist on the property at this time. I think in a nutshell, that's my presentation, but I can go through any questions you have.
Thank you, John, and let me apologize for mispronouncing your name when I read it into the record.
I'm fine.
First item for the board to consider is whether this is a complete application.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we, the application is complete and gives us enough information to make a determination.
Seconded.
Motion and a second to find the application complete. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Six zero zero. General discussion by members of the board about the presentation that we heard. Questions and comments? Nelson?
Just a couple of comments. He's corrected the big issue that we had in first reviewing this, but I didn't quite get what you were trying to say with the frontage allowed by the ZBA. You said the ZBA, you got a variance from the ZBA to allow, what, 150 feet?
169, plus or minus.
Okay, what's, what would be required normally?
250.
Oh, 250. So 169 was allowed.
Yes.
But then this, this dash four lot doesn't have that much.
It does. It has three different segments of frontage.
Okay, gotta add them all up.
You gotta add them all up, yep.
Okay, so you got 169 on each lot, then you balanced it out. Okay. The other thing I just happened to note is that your engineer stamps and so on will have to be on the final plan that we approve.
Yep.
And they're not on this plan you just handed out.
I didn't see the purpose in having it tonight, but it'll absolutely be on there.
Yeah, it's just a condition for later. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions by members of the board? Any member of the public wish to weigh in? Seeing none, close the public hearing.
I do one more.
Nelson, what do you got now?
One more, one more thing. Somewhere on here, you mentioned about this tempor, this easement for a driveway.
Yes.
On lot three for the benefit of lot four. Is that, did I read that right?
Yeah.
Yes, okay. And I think there should be a note on here, and I don't know if there is, it's small print, but that suggests that the intention is that they utilize that easement and not try and build themselves another driveway through the wetland. I guess that's where I'm going.
Yeah, I have, Note 10 actually calls out.
Okay.
Actually, Note 10 calls out the well easement. You have the utility and access listed as Note 10 as well.
Yes, it's, both easements are in Note 10. So Side Note, Side Note 10, the first part.
Then I would suggest they should be separated.
Yeah, it's just both proposed easements are in one note. I would be happy to separate them if you wish.
That would be great to add clarity. I appreciate that.
Sure.
And the encouragement is to use, utilize that easement for the driveway entrance and not try and build through the wetland.
Yeah, we've had a brief discussion with DPW as well when I spoke with Dawn. She had gone out to the site and taken a look at the driveway and thought where the existing drive was a great location and also noted that where the middle of the lot was where a driveway, where someone may want to put it, there's a 40-foot buffer. If anybody was to want to put a driveway there, they would have to go to the town ZBA in order to get, you know, into the zoning buffer.
Yeah.
They would likely have to go to the state to get, you know, some kind of relief from a shoreline standpoint. So we've already thought about all these ideas and suggested the driveway be in this best location.
Yeah, okay. Okay, I just wanted to make sure that was covered for the future. Somebody doesn't come along in a couple of years, somebody different.
I don't think Dawn will let them have a permit.
I'd say you'd have to get, get very lucky to get DS to agree putting a road over there, that flood zone and everything else.
Oh, yes, I know you wouldn't get permission. You just might.
I got you. I got you, Nelson. Sorry. Vic again.
So I don't know if, this was something the staff picked up in the technical comments. On page two of two of the old plan and the new plan, the legend has a line style that's labeled lot line to be abandoned.
Yes.
And I don't know that that's used in the plan, but it, the same line style is used for the setback from Bowers Pond.
Believe it or not, it's slightly different. It's hard to see it, the scale, the reduced scale. And if you look on sheet one, sheet one has that line type showing us where the, the old lot line is, does not show the shoreline issues. Calls out that it's subject to shoreline, but in all areas, it's outside of the development, so there's no need for it to be on the sheet. On the second sheet, both lines are, I believe, in the legend, or at least noted the differences.
Is there anything in the legend that says setback from wetland?
So in the legend, it does say lot line to be abandoned. And on the plan, it does note 150-foot woodland buffer is labeled 50-foot waterfront buffer is labeled 250-foot protected shoreline is labeled.
Yeah.
I can promise you at a larger scale, they look different.
Can you make them look a little bit more, more different? Is there any lot line that's being abandoned here?
Well, honestly, on the, on the second sheet, the former lot line is not shown, so to make this very simple, I can remove lot line to be abandoned from the second sheet.
But leave it on the first sheet. Leave it on the first sheet.
Where's the lot line to be abandoned on the first sheet?
It is.
It's, see the shaded area?
Yeah.
On lot three.
Oh, okay.
So the pink line is the lot line to be abandoned. That's the original lot line.
And that's on, that's on the plan you just handed out.
Yep, I see it. Yep.
I got it. I'm not sure it's abandoned when you, when you adjust them, but I think it just moved, but either way, it's fine. As long as we can tell the line styles apart a little bit better, that'd be fine with me. And that's obviously pretty hyper-technical anyways, I'm not sure that it matters. Other comments or questions by members of the board? What's the will of the board with respect to some final action? This is a minor subdivision, and so we have in our process for minor subdivisions to include within our approval all at once waiving things like sidewalk requirements and all that as being not necessary rather than waived according to the statute. However, approach it however you like, board.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion we grant conditional final approval to the lot line adjustment and two-lot subdivision application with the following conditions outlined in the letter from Mr. Best to you, to Tim Thompson to you, adding in the point you just made that we can, as it's a minor subdivision, we can, there's no need to waive all the other ifs and buts.
Seconded.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Okay. conditional final approval for you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you. You did a pretty good job with the presentation of lot line and small subdivision. Sometimes these lot line adjustments really get cloudy on the plan and you can't figure out exactly what someone's doing, but it's a pretty clear one. Thank you for that.
Appreciate that. Thank you very much.
No problem. Item number nine on our agenda is RCL Realty LLC as the applicant and owner. Conceptual discussion of amendments to a previously approved subdivision through lot mergers and lot line adjustments. The parcels are located on Elizabeth Drive and Charles Road in the R1 and R2 residential districts, Tax Map 3A, lots 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 25, 26, and 27. It is case number PB 2020-3, and I understand this applicant wants a continuance, but I don't have my notice to see until when.
False. It's not, it's not a continuance because it's.
As it's conceptual, you don't need a continuance.
Right. So it's not going to be addressed here tonight and will appear at some appropriate time in the future when the applicant chooses to come forward.
They've indicated the 21st, just so you all know.
Does that require any action on our part?
No, it does not.
Okay. Then we are at item 10 on our agenda, which is Doreen Why Not as the applicant and SAD Development as the owner. Review for acceptance and consideration of a waiver of full site plan review for a dog daycare training boarding business. The parcel's located at 257 Daniel Webster Highway in the I-1 Industrial, Aquifer Conservation District, Tax Map 3D2, Lot 36, Case Planning Board 2020-4.
She does have to have a continuance.
Okay. Staff, let's ask it for a continuance until when?
January 21st, 2020. So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining?
January twenty-first, twenty-twenty. So move, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second?
Oh, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? All right, that one's continued. Let's circle back to our continuation of the capital improvement plan and the ranking of all of our items. You guys thought we were done.
Just when I thought we were.
You thought we'd finished that.
Nelson. Okay, so we've got a memo in our package that includes the rankings that we use, which is a one through six Roman numeral system. With number one being urgent, and with a description that's in that memo. Cannot be delayed, needed immediately for health and safety. Roman numeral two, necessary, needed within three years to maintain basic level and quality of community services. Three is desirable, needed within four to six years to improve quality or level of service. Level four is deferrable, can be placed on hold until after a six-year period, but supports community development goals. Five is premature, which needs more research, planning, and coordination. Six is inconsistent, which means it's contrary to land use planning and community development goals. That's our ranking system, and so let's get out our list and take a look line item by line item. Number one is the public safety complex for the fire and police, which they're proposing not for the upcoming year, but for the one following that. And it roughly adds up to eleven million dollars when you add up all those various funding sources. Eleven million, twenty-five thousand dollars.
Or you could just look at the amount in the project description column, Mr. Chairman.
I was doing my math in my head. Came up with the same number.
Okay.
I cheated, I looked over there too. What is the will of the board? What's the will of the board with respect to ranking this criteria? My personal opinion is that we've had a lot of discussion over the years about fire and safety and whether our approach, especially to fire and the deployment of fire stations, north, south, and central, could be improved and ought to be rethought. And I think that this is ultimately a part of that discussion. And I also think that combining the departments into a safety complex seems to be the pattern that many towns are following. And I also have heard from the police department on several occasions privately that their current facility is struggling to meet their needs. And so the police department certainly has needs. The central fire station has some needs, and this is their proposed solution for it. They're proposing it two years from now, which if we were going just based on the timeframe, would put that in category one or two.
I would propose it for two.
I would propose it for five.
All right, let's call Nelson's motion a motion for level two.
All right.
Is there a second for that? Motion and a second to call that a two. All in favor of two?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yep.
One opposed. Any abstaining? All right, we don't necessarily vote on every one of these line items, but I think for that particular one, because there was some disagreement, we'd go with that. That ends up being, line item number one is a Roman numeral two. The South Fire Station with what is for the fire station minor upgrades, even though it's six hundred and fifty thousand dollars for improvements at the current site and location. What's the will of the board with that?
Probably ties right in with the.
Well, I think it's more important than that. They, the conditions of that station for the staff to live in are disgraceful. I think it should be one.
Okay, there's some sense for number one. I've heard those discussions about the South Fire Station, especially separating living quarters for men and women and respecting some separation by gender. Is not being adequately attended to at that station now, and should be.
And the third, and the other part is that the forestry engine, which is what they proposed putting in the Third Bay that they're going to construct, that vehicle either lives out in the open or is, has a sort of canvas shed, a canvas cover over it, and is there, and that is inadequate.
All right.
Would you propose it for a one then?
Yes, I am.
Something that's really that urgent?
Okay, Alistair proposes a one. Anybody disagree?
Well, it's been on the, on the, on the list for twelve years. Good God.
Yeah, let's get it done. These, both of these fire station projects also have this private donation line item for where some of that funding's going to come from. For those who don't necessarily remember what that is, when the outlet mall was built, the outlet mall made a private donation towards the fire departments. And the fire, the outlet mall opened in twenty-twelve, I think.
Mm-hmm.
And so this is a donation that was probably made in twenty, two thousand and nine. Here we are in two thousand and twenty, eleven years later, and haven't sorted out how to use it. Yeah, eleven years later. Two thousand and nine to now?
I thought it was two thousand and ten.
Oh, it may be two thousand, may have been approved in oh-nine and.
When we finally got the money in the bank, but yeah.
It's been, certainly been an extended period of time. Okay, so Alistair's impression is a number one. I can't argue with that. Is everyone okay calling it a number one?
I'll move it to number one if you want.
Call it number, line item two is a number one. Item three is bridge replacement over Babusik Brook. And it's proposed for several years hence, with the delay, I think, being focused on when state funds are available, since that's going to be almost three million dollars of state funds.
That's really a driver in this whole thing, yes. We need the state money. I don't think the town wants to undertake that on a state.
No, I, I agree with that.
It's in fact a state road, isn't it? It's state road.
No, it's not.
Isn't it not?
It's town road, but the state.
Town roads within the urban compact.
Yeah, that's right. Thank you. Thank you for correcting me.
Now, when the, the bridge replacements along Babusik Brook, this is, I think, the third one. And the two that are upstream from it had been replaced, and there was some importance to the sequencing of starting the furthest upstream as each one of those bridges successively becomes the bottleneck and when you improve the upstream one. And so this appears to be the last of those series along Babusik Brook. I, despite the fact that it's planned further out because of funding, I think that you call it necessary or perhaps even urgent.
I would propose it to be necessary. It really is. It's a safety issue with the people bicycling, walking, whatever.
Absolutely.
Trying to get over it.
I mean, this is, this has been on the council's radar now for several years, and, you know, quite honestly, we rely heavily on Kyle being able to give us the best recommendation and you know, Kyle's not bumping this out because he, he wants to bump it out.
No.
It's an opportunity to, you know, to capitalize with the, with the state bridge aid program.
Yeah, and obviously it's important with many millions of dollars.
It's very, very important in that regard, and I also know that the council has talked about, you know, putting, putting a sidewalk over that particular area along Route Three, running north of Wire Road, so it's part of the grand scheme of things, so.
I heard that as well in Paul's discussion about, as this bridge improvement comes forward, that sidewalks are a part of this, and I would observe, my memory tells me from past years, it's the, the sidewalks have been kind of like, well, we hope to, well, maybe. Well, we'll look at it when the time comes, and hearing a definitive sidewalks will be a part of this bridge.
It's going to be a part of it.
Is a good message. I liked that. So, number two, call line item three, the bridge replacement, level two, necessary?
I will, so move.
Okay. Let's just label it, and then we'll vote on the whole mess at the end, as long as we're sort of at a general consensus.
Yeah.
Number four is the bridge replacement, US Three, Sahigan River, Chamberlain Bridge Road. Two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, which is likely the investigative phase of that, because bridges cost way more than that. I.
Well, if you read the detail that they provided in the backup, and they're not replacing the whole bridge. They're doing some repair. Underneath the bridge, there's a spalling of concrete. There's a concrete layer in there, and it's spalling off. And this is an attempt to patch that, if you will. So, the bridge, it's not really a new bridge at this Chamberlain site. It's just a kind of a repair and upgrade to it. This was discovered by our alert team there that was giving us the money to do the Sahigan River Trail. When they went under the trail, they noticed this spalling, and it exposed some reinforcing bars in the concrete.
Plus we've got steel sheets which are rusted and rusting through.
Oh, that.
Well, you won't rust through those. Those things are an inch thick.
That's part of the grant that we've got to replace the steel plates, yeah.
Yeah, I am enthusiastic about that bridge getting repaired. I don't like having steel plates covering parts of the sidewalk, and I know that it's certainly, nobody's going to fall through a steel plate that's an inch thick, but it still isn't the presentation that we want for a big-boy town that takes care of our infrastructure. In addition to which, it's a minor thing, but if you happen to be walking on that steel plate when ice or snow, you will slide.
Yeah.
You will slide.
I'd try that.
Anyway, so I, what do you think? The Chamberlain Bridge repairs, I think it's at least a two and maybe a one.
At least a two, and maybe a one, yeah. I'd even go a one with that.
Okay.
I mean.
Let's score that a one then.
Let's score it a one, right.
Line item five, stormwater drainage improvements and permit compliance. This is a line item every year with a certain amount budgeted for.
This is the MS four project. I think we have to just do it. We have to put that as a one.
Yep.
Yeah, okay. We'll call line item five a Roman numeral one. The first line item, six, sidewalks, looks like starting in the, in the next year, two hundred thousand dollars a year for, and continuing each year, as being regular improvements to sidewalks.
Yeah.
What do you like for that one?
I like a one. I, you know.
I wouldn't argue.
You know, it's, we've been talking about it for.
Yeah, one or two. I think one or two is fine, but if you guys feel strongly about one, what's that?
I think a two would be fine, whereas it's already, I mean, it's already planned for last year, right?
Well, you don't want them to move it because they said, oh, it's two, so we'll take it out of here.
I think a proper thank you is for, for the town council and the administrative department looking at that. A proper thank you is giving it a one, calling it a highest priority, since we've been the ones to kind of encourage that thinking. Second item number six, which is Gale Road between Nora and Joey Drainage Improvements. And that was the project that we heard from Dawn.
Yeah. Well, that whole thing is a mess. You know, there's more history than Dawn gave you on that, and it's not pretty. In that, that whole plan was, was one. At the time, there was a law on the books, and it's still there, I think, if, if the planning board doesn't act within a certain period of time after being presented a plan, it gets automatically approved. That's how that plan got approved down there, just.
Yes, that is the sixty-five day clock. That's the result of missing your sixty-five day clock is, you go to build. All right. So let's call that a level one urgent.
It got me so mad, I went and joined the planning board.
Those guys, planning board, just let that slide right there. All right, level one for the second item six.
Yeah.
Item seven, woodland drive area drainage improvements for deer wood, birch wood, pine tree, heartwood, and timber for two-point-two million dollars, beginning two or three years from now in equal amounts.
Yeah.
Necessary?
Yeah, yeah, I put it necessary.
Level two.
Yeah.
Paving and infrastructure improvements, the usual budget each year of roughly nine hundred odd thousand dollars. Looks like eight fifty in the current year.
This is an ongoing thing.
Over a million in the next couple, one-point-one. I think a number one urgent, each year, it's, it's necessary to be done.
Yeah.
Paving infrastructure improvements on the gravel roads is twenty-four, twenty-five for the year and three hundred thousand. And we do have a few gravel roads around, including Greens Pond Road. I don't know if that's one of the ones on this list, but.
Greens Pond is on the list. Greens Pond, Leicester Road. Old Blood is on the list, but Old Blood's going to be taken care of by the development if it ever goes ahead.
Parts of it will. So this, because it's so far out, do we call this desirable? I mean, they've been unpaid for an awfully long time.
Yeah, I'd say put it desirable.
Okay, item number ten.
In fact, if, my memory serves, and I just interrupted, Mr. Jim, I think we, we heard from Kyle last year that it's sort of depending on buying a new grader to do it, so I just offer that as a thought.
Yeah, you're right about that. It was actually the opposite, that they have a grader that's failing, and either they're going to buy a new grader or pave the roads, one or the other.
So obviously they're going to buy a new grader when they need it.
Or maybe this project moves up. It's not a hugely expensive one.
Ah, yeah.
I think that can be a decision to sort out. DW Highway Greeley, towards the center of town. Twenty-twenty-three through twenty-twenty-six are the dates on that one.
I would have thought desirable.
All right, let's call that desirable. Item eleven, wire road intersection improvements, way out, actually, it's the last item on here, but the note actually says might be further than that.
Well, I think it needs, needs more research, planning, and coordination.
Yeah.
I don't even know what they're going to do. I mean, it's not, there's a note in the pack telling us what they're going to do.
No, and we've seen notes before, and nobody agrees, and everybody's got the seven other studies, and make it an intersection and tee it up, and make it a traffic circle, and even some whispers about traffic lights, even though that'll never happen. So, but that's what, you know, item four or five is supposed to be. Needs more planning and coordination. I mean, I don't think it's premature to put it out seven years and call it needing more planning, so premature is maybe not the right word, but five is the right ranking, I think.
Okay.
Yeah.
Turkey Hill Road Intersection Improvements are already done in the current year.
Yep. So that's a one.
That's a one.
Doesn't need a ranking. It's already in our current, the year we're halfway through.
What is that? Is that at, is that at Amherst and Turkey Hill, or is that at?
It's a Turkey Hill and Babusik Lake.
No.
Oh, is that mine?
Macken, something or other, isn't it?
Some question, it's the one that.
Robert?
Yeah, that's talking about realignment of Turkey Hill and Babusik Lake Road.
Oh, okay.
That's what I thought, yeah.
And doing, I think, a roundabout in there.
Are they doing that in the next six months? Because that's all that's left of the year that they've got it in the budget. All right, well, either way, it's already part of an approved budget. It's already been ranked last year, so we don't need to weigh in on it, on Turkey Hill.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, Turkey Hill. Merrimack River Boat Ramp Access Improvements, four hundred thousand dollars in a couple of years. I. Mixed feelings on that. Everybody can always look at a boat ramp and say, oh, we can always push that off, we can always put that off till later. It's easy to do that with boat ramp. Separate observation, as a member of the planning board and going through the master plan process, the Merrimack River is a horribly underutilized resource in this town that nobody kind of gets to and enjoys, even though we've got this beautiful river that goes from one end of town to the other, because we don't have very good access to it. And so I support the access. I don't know where that puts us for a number.
Well, I went down to, they had a site tour of where they were going to build this thing back in the summer or spring. And I went down there and took a look at it. And there's a very small amount of land left that owns, is owned by the town. It is thirty feet, at least, to the river from the top of the bank, and the bank comes right up to the edge of the river. And if anybody built a road down in there, it's a tremendous excavation going to be needed. And then you've got to get out of there to park somewhere, because you need, if you look at the plan for the one they're building in Greeley Park, they've got a big parking lot. You need a big parking lot associated with these. These are for trailered boats. And so, the result is, I think that particular site is just, just stinks. I would hate to put the money into it when, a mile away, you've got another boat ramp that's paid for by the state that we can use, you know, it's, even though it's in Nashua.
So what?
I'm, I'm for putting it out there in the, in the distant future, after my retirement.
Access to water recreational boots is currently difficult, not possible due to limitations. State Fish and Game has funds to provide boat ramp improvements due to the difficult access at Griffin Street. Public Works is exploring another option, utilizing land south of the wastewater treatment facility. State Fish and Game Department can provide fifty-fifty matching funds up to two hundred to qualifying applicants. Access across the railroad tracks in this area is much better, but access restrictions need to be researched. The fence line along the sewage treatment plant will need to be moved or relocated. Extensive grading will need to be done to get to the water.
Extensive grading is a nice way to say it's, it's huge, the amount of grading you'd need.
All right.
Five, then.
Yeah, that's where I'd put it.
You like five?
I like five for this.
I like water access more than that, but I'll accept your suggestion.
Go take a look, because you can't.
No, you've got a water access, just got a Greeley Park.
Well, yeah.
You don't have to have a Nashua sticker on to use it.
No, you don't.
No, you don't. That's not necessarily the same as providing access for our residents in our town.
It is a sad indictment in this community that the town of Merrimack cannot access the river that they're named after.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Period, end of story.
Yeah, okay.
Council Dwyer brought it up several years ago, and I support what Council Dwyer said back then. Okay, we live on the Merrimack River with the town of Merrimack. We should be able to provide a specific community to the people that like to fish or canoe to be able to go onto the Merrimack River.
Oh, that's already there. You can already get there from fishing and canoeing.
Not very well.
Not very well.
You can't get there with a motorboat. This is for motorboat access. That's, that's all it adds that we don't have, is the motorboat access.
We've talked about motorboat access. We've talked about it down the south end of town by the, by the wastewater treatment plant.
Yeah, that's what this is.
That's what this is.
I understand that.
Yeah. But when you go and look at it and see what's involved, you say, do we really want to spend that kind of money on this for?
You can't access the Merrimack River with a motorboat by going underneath the railroad bridge.
On Depot Street.
On Depot Street, okay, you can't do that. And then you go up to the north end of town, and again, that's.
I know.
It's very limited.
Yeah.
So there, there's, there is no reason why this community cannot provide it at some particular point.
And even if this location has got some grading and some other issues, that opportunities to cross the railroad tracks are so rare and so difficult to acquire that it may be that you got Hobson's Choice, you know, it's this difficult site or this impossible site. You pick or else we say, let's, don't bother with, with river access. Um, anyway.
Yeah, the only other, the only other possibility is at some particular point, Mr. Patterson has to do something with this property off of Ra- off of Wright Avenue. And then, and then at that particular point, you might have another opportunity.
Would be a better.
And I, 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 I agree with you.
Yeah.
I, I, I agree with you because now, because now you're linking in that, that, that the southerly part where there, that road is very tough to get to. You have, you have the bridge to nowhere down there. You know, you, you know, you've got very little going on down there. So now that might, that'll tie in combined with the Sklar property that Conservation Commission just, it's a lot of potential down. There's a lot of potential.
Lot of potential, right.
Okay, for, for, for a variety of, of different things. So.
So the description on level three is desirable, needed within four to six years to improve quality or level of service. Um, then below that, deferrable can be placed on hold till after a six-year period, but supports goals. Premature is, needs more research, planning and coordination.
Well, how about deferrable though? It certainly can be placed on hold until you get the, uh, Nashua access available. See if there's really a need for this thing.
I just don't love the idea of saying, well, let's just go, go do what another town does.
Yeah, I just, I, I apologize, Mr. Chairman of Nelson. I just, you know, this is Merrimack. We should, we, I don't wanna be sending people down to Nashville, you know. I don't, I don't see why we have to look to other communities to see whether or not something works or doesn't work.
Well, because you may not need it. I guess that's where I'm going with that.
That's like saying that Nashua's got some high schools, you know?
Yeah, but they.
It's not an answer.
Yep, but they couldn't absorb our students. There's a subtle difference. Anyway, I see the difference. I see both sides. I can see both sides.
Um. Let's kind of, let's go through the choices. Um, I like it as a level three. Does anyone else like level three? One, two, Bill?
I'm on the, I'm on the council, so I, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna.
Stay out of it.
I'm gonna stay out of it, but I, I would.
And anyone like level four?
Yeah.
Anyone like level five?
Yeah, I like five.
So three people like level three and two people like level five. That makes it a level three.
Okay, then put it down.
Okay, uh, item fifteen is sidewalk improvements based on TAP applications, uh, every two years, starting year after next.
Severance Bridge canoes.
What about the canoe?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Small space down there. Severance Bridge canoe lamps, ramp slope stabilization. Um, I think fifty thousand dollars is low dollar.
Sounded like urgent too, from what was said.
Yeah, when you start to have, uh, erosion that's affecting potential road integrity.
Yeah.
Um, I'd call that level one. Not be, not necessarily because of the canoe access, which I definitely like, but urgent because of the road. Um, three different levels of TAP grants for roughly a million dollars each, um, starting in twenty-one, then twenty-three, then twenty-five.
These are kind of placeholders, I think.
Oh, they're absolutely, and they depend on you achieving a TAP grant once you've applied for it and all of that.
Still desirable.
Yeah, I think that they're at least desirable, but, okay, so number fifteen is a three?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, sixteen, sewer line extensions to McQuestion, the sewer basins. That's bonded in twenty-two, twenty-three.
Sounds like it's somewhat between necessary or desirable.
Um, I, I agree with that. I think a, a two or a three on those is appropriate. I'm glad to see that some of the nineteen seventy-four sewer master plan are actually getting ticked off the, uh, it's not seventy-four, but it's seventy-something sewer master plan are getting ticked off the, checked off here. Um, and they actually mentioned that in their descriptions, that it's priority number fourteen and fifteen or something like that. Um, levels, uh, who likes level two the best? Who likes level three the best?
Three, I'd go for three.
Looks like we had more hands on no, level two for, um, you wanna do that for both sewer line extensions sixteen and seventeen?
Yes.
Level two.
Both on two.
Uh, Depot Street Boat Ramp Repairs. Um.
You, you, you gotta do something there if you're gonna use it. It's not usable.
You can barely stand there.
Yeah?
You can barely stand there.
Yeah, yeah.
Sounds like one then.
All right, so let's call that a one.
Yeah.
Uh, the collection of libraries, um, some of them are maintenance and things, and one of them is a big old new library.
And they're all way out in the end of the, end of the lifetime here.
Well, yeah, the new library is premature.
What?
Premature for the new library, I would say.
Yeah.
Yeah, and even the other ones, um.
The other ones too.
They're all the kinds of things that you need if you stick with this building, but if you decide you wanna add a new library, you'll do any of those things.
Yeah.
So they, they've certainly stuck them way out there. They're not gonna build them based on whatever Roman numeral we put on it. Um, why don't we call them fours and fives? Fours for all of the maintenance items and five for the whole library?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Four, 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 five. Community Development Master Plan, uh, in twenty-four, twenty-five.
I think must, it's a must be done then, but it.
Yep. Um, it, you know, it's well, well out there in the years, I think.
Yeah. Three.
Two, three, or whatever. If, if we put a two or a three, we should put a special note in the cover letter that says, you know, thank you for thinking ahead for the master plan and the budgeting. What do you guys think? Number three?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Three, with a note in the cover letter. Parks and Recreation Athletic Fields.
Certainly a three.
One point seven five million dollars, starting several years out, bonded. Calling it a three as desirable within four to six years.
Yeah, I think so.
This was something weird I should have asked about. I remember noticing it when I reviewed it first. The, in their backup material, they talk about utilizing that land that's up on the Bedford Town Line that we got as part of the, uh, of that development, you know?
Yeah, Greens Pond Phase seventy-seven.
Yeah, yeah.
Greenfield, Greenfield Farms.
Greenfield Farms, that's it.
I just could not understand how they needed a million dollars to make that piece of land a playing field. Cause it's a flat, open field already, you know, it's not like it was a, a, a rock pile or something. It doesn't explain it in there, Bob, and I forgot to ask it when he was here.
It's certainly well out in the future where we can give it a priority that reflects their, their, um, calendar.
Yeah, that's what I would suggest we do if it's, uh, they wanna.
So this is, um.
The school wants to, uh, rebuild the, uh, high school field to, uh, tur- uh, make.
Artificial turf, artificial turf.
Artificial turf, yeah.
Yeah. Which means the ones you've got.
It's almost as much money as this, by the way.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Well, Hollis is just putting one in and I know how much that's costing.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's been.
No, and they don't last forever either. Uh, that's another thing.
No, but the point is, once you've got one, you can use it a lot. I mean, Bedford uses theirs for all the, I mean, apart from when it's covered in snow, you, they go out and use it. It's not like.
Yeah, yeah.
It's not like it's turf, but they'll chew it up. I mean.
Yeah.
They can go around kick on it all the time.
Yeah, that does seem like a lot for development of two fields, so let's have some more discussion when we get to it next year. I was sort of breezing past that, thinking that the two fields were a part of that money, but not all of it.
Yeah.
Um, I know that that twenty-ten athletic field plan was talking about grass fields developing at about a hundred thousand dollars an acre for the thing like at Bishop Field on the corner of Madeline Bennett.
Yeah.
For something like that. And even then, I was kind of shocked. I'm like, you know, give me the keys to the bulldozer. I'll flatten it out.
Yeah.
And I know that there's more to it than that, obviously, sort of being tongue in cheek, but one point seven five million for two ball fields.
Yeah.
Unless they're, they're turf with a dome over the top.
Well, they're gonna have to put, um, sprinklers in presumably. That includes that. They'd probably sprinkle them, I mean, at least for the summer. I don't know, maybe I.
Maybe, I, I don't know. Maybe I just don't know much about building fields.
Uh, you know, there, there may be some things that are, that make it more complicated than we're aware of for whatever reason. I don't know what that might be. Two fields with some parking area, maybe you gotta put in some restrooms, maybe you gotta put in some sprinklers. If it's multi-use, you're doing baseball versus soccer versus rectangle fields, uh, there's some fencing. You're still not getting anywhere near one point seven.
You don't put in restrooms, you put by a portaloo.
Anyway, okay, um, it's well enough off in the future for us to say, uh, you know, fo- three, four number, something like that. What do you guys think of that? Or did we already decide that it's a three?
We had said three?
Three is what I wrote down when we were talking earlier.
Yeah, two's good. Put in three.
Okay. Yeah, let's just get us out of this meeting here tonight. Um, wastewater one through six. Uh, we didn't really get into all of these details from this presentation.
Well, number one is dependent on the widening of, um, Effie Everett Turnpike, whenever that's gonna happen. And I forget this area, when this area is.
Twenty-two, I think is the projected start date.
I know it's the start date, but which section are they doing first and last?
My understanding is they're starting south, coming north.
Yeah.
That's what I heard.
The first section is the Nashua line.
Yeah, of course. So they can put in a new, a new tolling booth, somewhere between ten, eight and ten. Oh, yes. Everybody getting excited of taking the toll booth out. There's gonna be a toll booth between eight.
That's conjecture, Alastair.
No, it isn't.
It is conjecture.
It wasn't in the plan.
Wasn't in the ten-year transportation plan. You can't say that, Alastair. And we, look, you know, the council's had that conversation.
I'm sure it has.
Okay, especially regarding the taking of industrial and content at the Bull, but the quit for a quote thing. You know, we're, we're very, we're very astute in, in that particular regard, you know?
Hmm.
It's not in the plan.
All right. I won't say anymore.
Um. Either way, the Turnpike piece on, uh, wastewater number one is five hundred thousand dollars a couple of years hence. That tells me that that's a, that's planning money, if they actually have to relocate, uh, Culvert under the Turnpike.
It's certainly necessary.
Well, I think they're gonna try and get the state to pony up, you know, this is.
I don't see why the state, well, we have to pay for it. The state should pay for it, the whole thing.
Well, they, they're gonna pay for most of it and, uh, we're gonna pay for something.
Yeah, inevitably, no matter what the state does, even if they're doing the, under the Turnpike part, the connections on both sides are, require some work. Um, two or three?
Yeah.
Well, it's gonna be necessary when they were on the Turnpike.
Yeah, I'd say give it a two.
Number two. Uh, wastewater treatment plant phase three and pump station upgrades, uh, that's already in the current year for better than half of it and nine million in the other half of it.
Urgent.
That's all user fees, um, and state loans from the sewer reserve fund.
From here on is user fees, right?
Yeah, except for the one that has a Bedford contribution.
Because half the stuff, yeah, of course.
Yeah.
I think that we heard a lot about wastewater treatment and that they're, they've got a plan for phasing this over some stages, but all of it is like level one and two.
Yes, oh, absolutely.
Absolutely, yeah.
Um, so two, three, four, five and six. Oh, six is a placeholder. Let's not do that. Um, two, three, four, five, calling them, what, a one or a two?
Give it a two.
Call it a two. For all of i- items, two, three, four and five. Item six is a nutrient removal. It's, here's a placeholder. Let's call that, um, premature.
Yes.
If they called it a placeholder, we'll call it the same thing. That completes our work. Uh, we've had one item indicated as being mentioned in the cover letter. Is there anything else that anybody wants to mention in the cover letter? I would like to mention, thank you for, uh, integrating sidewalks fairly thoroughly into the master plan.
I agree with that.
I agree with that.
Anything else anybody wanna mention of in the cover letter? Robert, you need anything else to write that cover letter? All right, uh, that concludes that item of business. We have a set of minutes somewhere here.
Any other business?
Uh, oh, let's see, that's right. We do our discussion and possible action regarding other items of concern. Does anyone have any other items of concern to discuss?
Yes.
Yes.
Let's hear them.
Your, uh, one friend, Chris, is in his strug- still not got his approval for his site for synergy.
Ah, yes, um, a continue, uh, an extension of the time allowed to meet the conditions of approval.
There is a request that we give him more breathing space.
Yes, 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 yes. Uh, where is that? In the stack of stuff. Here it is, synergy expiration. Um, included in our package was an email sent to the town in November looking for a, what, six-month extension?
Yeah.
They're working through DES, getting their alteration of paint, terrain permit for do the, doing the things that they agreed to do at Synergy for that access road behind them.
And have already done.
Yeah, they did, did the work. They need the permit for now.
Gotta get authorized.
What's the will of the board with respect to granting an extension of their, uh, uh, conditions of approval?
Move approval, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second?
I'll second it reluctantly.
Robert, do we need specific dates or is it whatever plus six?
No, uh, because it took a couple of months to get here because of the weather and whatever, I'm just gonna add six months to today's date.
Okay.
So.
All right, so six months from now.
It's the state. I don't think they're being unreasonable.
The applicant, I agree.
Seriously.
If the state's got you bound up with a permitting process, I've.
If there was anything else, I would, I'd be inclined to disagree, but when you're dealing with the state, as we've experienced in this community.
That. I agree with that. All in favor of granting a extension to six months from today's date?
Yep.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Six, zero, zero. Um, I have a discussion, possible action regarding other items of concern. Robert, can you fill out a service request in my name for the site where DW Diner is and the sixteen temporary signs that are sitting out in the grass?
DW, oh, yeah, yeah.
And at the entrance and at the light and all of that. They've just gotten absolutely nuts with the temporary signs on that site. Uh, does anyone else have any items of concern?
I have something to bring to the board's attention. Uh, Bill reminded me of it tonight. Bill and I had the opportunity to attend a briefing given to the MVD by their, uh, groundwater consulting firm.
Oh, yeah.
Jamie Emery.
Huh?
Jamie Em- Emery.
Yes, and it was Mr. Emery himself who gave the presentation and it is most informative. And I would suggest that this planning board should receive such a, a briefing. I don't know if you've gone, I know you wanted to do it for the council as well and, uh.
In, in, in having a conversation, we, it, 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 we feel the planning board is, is an appropriate venue to, to listen to Mr. Emery because ultimately any decisions that are made by his feedback is obviously gonna be your jurisdiction.
Yeah.
So they've given that presentation to the MVD?
MVD.
It was, it was a contract they had with MVD to do it.
Yeah.
And, uh, they've looked at the so- at the salt levels, the NACL levels in the world.
I would love to have a, a presentation for us. Um, let me throw out this other idea. Um, the planning board, unique among all the other boards, has the ability to convene a joint meeting of us plus ZBA or CONSCOM or whoever we like. We haven't done that in years.
Do you can with you, Mr. Chairman? I think it would be appropriate to invite the Conservation Commission and the zoning board. If anything, zoning board probably not gonna have the impact, but it would be definitely informational to the ZBA, but for the CONSCOM, huge.
Absolutely.
Huge.
An invitation to attend our meeting or a joint meeting with them?
I'd do it as an invitation.
Joint meeting and then set up an invitation with, uh, with Mr. Emery to come and present. That would be my recommendation.
Joint meeting is usually only for do, undertaking business. I mean, they can come and attend a planning board meeting with an invitation on a Tuesday night, whenever we have one.
That's the way I would do it. It would be a planning board meeting and they're all invited. That, you know.
Okay.
The joint meeting is usually when each board is gonna make a decision on that item that night, you know, so that they're all present. That's really what's.
Singing from the same hymn book, okay.
So, okay, um, Robert, why don't we look at least, um, a couple of months out to give enough notice to the other boards to have them try and arrange it in their schedule, um, maybe our March meeting or something like that, one of our March meetings? And see if, if Mr. Emery can.
Schedule it with Emery and Garrett.
Oh, pretty good.
Yeah, find out if they can and are willing to and are not gonna charge somebody for doing it.
Yeah.
Um, thank you for bringing that up. Any? Um, thank you for bringing that up, any other items of concern?
Is the um, planning board going to address the, the Route Three NRPC bicycle corridor plan?
Yeah.
Cause it was scheduled for the third and because of.
Robert, what we got?
It's the January twenty-first meeting that'll be discussed.
Okay.
Any other items of concern? Um, okay, uh, then we are up to the approval of the minutes of November five, twenty nineteen.
I make a motion, we approve the minutes as printed.
Is there a second?
I'll second that, I did read them, and I, I have no problems.
Any further discussion, all in favor of approving the minutes of November five, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining?
I'm abstaining, cause I wasn't there.
Four, zero, two, with Nelson and Counselor Boyd abstaining, um, but those minutes are adopted. That concludes our regularly scheduled program.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining, we're adjourned, uh, at nine-thirty. Uh, don't forget to turn your microphone off, and thank you very much, everyone, for getting a lot of work done in a relatively short meeting for that.